Okay, apologize for the arriving late, but in any case, this is the regularly scheduled of the meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. It's Monday evening, May 15, 2023, and it's 7:20 PM. Currently present for the Board are myself, Roy Gardner, newly elected members Diane Phillips and Rachel Tedesco, welcome.
Thank you.
Regular member Sherri Bates and Associate Member Lindy Snow. First item of business tonight is going to be to accept the planning board minutes from Monday, May 1, 2023. For everyone's understanding, accepting the minutes is simply a procedural step that says we've looked at the minutes, acknowledged that we have a printed copy of the minutes. If there are any obvious corrections that need to be made, we can make those right now. Typically, what we do is vote procedurally to accept the minutes, and since technically speaking, because these meetings are always recorded, the legal, if you will, minutes from this meeting become the actual recorded meeting itself. So the minutes are available for if someone wants to, at some point down the road, look at what we've proposed, what we're doing. It'll give a summary, but they still would need to, in a legal situation, if there was some kind of appeal and/or court actions taken, they would end up using the recorded minutes. So I could entertain a motion at this point to accept the minutes of Monday, May 1, 2023.
Make motion that the minutes of the Monday, May 1 meeting being approved as written.
So that's a motion. Bates, do you have a second to that motion?
I have a second.
We've got a second, Snow. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll call that a unanimous vote of the four regular members and Associate Member Lindy Okay, next item on the agenda is River Road. So I'm at a bit of a loss here tonight because I didn't have time to stop home and pick up No, my tablet. And we would like to, if possible, have the River Road subdivision displayed up on the screen.
Roy, I'm going to give you access to my calendar. Is it on the planning board? I don't have access to the planning board.
You did put it in here if this is helpful, because this is what I did load up the changes right here.
I'll get started here. In any case, I'll get the public hearing underway. We start before we actually open the public hearing by reading the notice from the East Bridgewater Planning Board, Notice of Public Hearing. The Planning Board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 15, 2023, at 7:00 PM, in the large second-floor conference room. The purpose of the hearing will be to review a Form B definitive subdivision application submitted by PMP Consulting, Inc., on behalf of client J4 LLC and Edward Badger, owners of record. The applicant is proposing a two-lot, single-family residential subdivision that is creating one new building lot. The subject property is located in the west side of River Road Extension off of the River Road cul-de-sac.
For some reason, when he activated those screens, I lost my signal here.
All right, so if we shut those off, do we get the signal back?
Sac says he can see it, so go right ahead.
Okay, back to the beginning of the paragraph that I just started. The subject property is located in the west side of River Road Extension off of the River Road cul-de-sac and consists of approximately 1.81 plus or minus acres. Zoning classification is Residence 1, R1. The lot is shown on the East Bridgewater Assessors Maps as map 28, plot 34. The planning board is required by the East Bridgewater Subdivision Rules and Regulations and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81-T, and the Town of East Bridgewater Bylaws, Part 8, Construction Phase Stormwater Management and Soil Erosion Control Bylaw, seeks public input relative to this proposed subdivision. The plans are on file, where the Planning Building Department can be reviewed between the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 12 noon. This notice was published in The Enterprise on Monday, May 1, 2023, and Monday, May 8, 2023. At this point in time, I'll declare the public hearing open, and note for the record that since this is a subdivision, the members who can vote in this subdivision would be Roy Gardner, Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, and Sherri Bates. Okay, I see Eddie back there, and Pat's there as well. Gentlemen, if you could introduce yourselves to the Board officially.
My name's Eddie Jacobs, PMP Consulting, Inc.
And Pat Carrera, PMP Consulting, Inc.
So if you would, you want to give us a brief overview of what the plan is here? Let me explain something to everyone here that's potentially interested in this. Although the ad said it's a two-lot subdivision, I think it should be noted that one of those lots, if you will, already exists and already has a house on it. That's the house that Eddie Badger owns, or I believe still owns. The actual subdivision legally under Massachusetts General Law is a two-lot subdivision because the road that's proposed would create the legal frontage for Mr. Badger's house. Because currently, under state law, Mr. Badger's house does not have legal frontage. Due to an oversight many years ago, an extra lot was taken off the cul-de-sac on River Road and was sold off as a single-family house lot. That lot was the legal frontage for Mr. Badger's house. So this is to both correct an oversight and create a new lot, which would be on the opposite side of what's referred to on the Assessors Maps as River Road Extension, or the westerly side of River Road Extension, if you will. So with that, I'll let the applicants, consultants, give us a brief overview of what's going to be done here.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Roy. So as you said, you know, it's exactly what the project is, is we're doing improvements to the layout of River Road Extension to create adequate access for the existing dwelling, which is owned by Mr. Badger, and for one new building lot. It shows the improvements to the roadway. It shows turnaround access now for emergency apparatus, which would be better access to the hydrant versus the existing hydrant, which is much further to the south. And we're also doing, along with the pavement improvements, we're doing some drainage improvements along the east side of River Road Extension to capture some of the additional runoff water that we're creating, treat it, and then direct it into the existing drainage system on River Road. We're certainly happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay, and we do have a letter that dated May 15 and was received in the Planning Building Department office. It's from William M. Martin and Mary Jo. P. Martin of 13 River Road, East Bridgewater, Mass. I'll quickly read the letter. The letter is to state our strong objection to the proposed plan for the addition of a buildable lot on River Road Extension until after studies are completed regarding the water table inspected, expected, if an additional house is built on that piece of property. Our area of River Road has considerable areas of clay deposits, and there is sometimes standing water in the proposed building site, which backs up to the home to the left of ours. One of the homes on Meadowbrook Drive also backs up to the proposed home site, and we understand has a vernal pool on the rear of the property. Across the driveway from the proposed additional site, the plot plan indicates wetlands. We do not... Given that, I'll go to the Board and ask if there's any questions of members of the Board would like to ask of the applicant's representatives.
I'd like to ask if you know where this vernal pool is exactly, on what part?
We're not aware of any actual vernal pool out there. We've researched all the environmental mapping. There are no certified vernal pools by DEP. There are no potential vernal pools that are shown by DEP. We have had the wetlands flagged on both sides of River Road Extension, and we're actually showing the extent of those wetlands on these plans.
So I see it's with those colored lines that are, looks like, to the east?
Yeah, the east and south. The blue line would be the actual wetlands.
Okay.
Red would be the 25-foot buffer. The purple line is the 50-foot. The yellow line is the 100-foot. So as Pat said, you know, we had a certified botanist go out and hang the flags, and we located them and put them on the plan, and there was no mention of a vernal pool by him or others, not on the DEP mapping either.
Can I ask a question related to that? What's the status of this in regards to conservation at this point?
So we talked about it, and we decided that because of the stormwater issues and stuff like that, we wanted to move through Planning Board first, get the peer review in before we moved into Conservation Commission for the notice of intent.
Any other questions for members of the Board?
I do have a question. So if this letter of, I don't know what you would call it, but if the water study shows that it does not meet the requirement, it would be a concern for these residents, what steps would you have to take?
Okay, so we've done soil testing all over the property. We did the soil testing as required for the new lot with the Board of Health to find a suitable place for the septic system. We also did some soil testing along River Road on the east side to see if there was any place suitable to do any additional stormwater management, and we know the soils down there are awful. And we've taken all that into account by doing this plan. You know, one feature we have shown on the lot to be developed is a bioretention rain garden to capture a lot of the runoff that'll come off from the roof and the driveway of the new house. Obviously, that's not really part of this plan, but we felt it was an important feature to show, to show that we would be addressing it and limiting the amount of runoff that will be going into the new driveway area or roadway area.
So where are you going to direct the water, Pat?
So right now, everything that is extremely flat, what's down there for Eddie's driveway, is very, very flat. And quite honestly, there really isn't a drainage issue down there right now, for whatever reason, it works. So what we're doing is we're kind of trying to maintain that situation within the roadway by cross-sloping the road, directing the water to the west side where the wetlands are. The problem we had is the road is actually, the way the land is, the road is actually lower than the wetland area. We couldn't get the water to flow from the road to the wetland. So we're capturing it. We've got a stone diaphragm along the edge of the road. We've also got a grass swale with an underdrain with a couple of great inlets, and then we're going to take that, whatever's left, that underdrain will then direct into a drain manhole over the existing drain line of River Road, and then it'll carry through the drainage system to the outfall.
Anything else on the Board? All right, and members of the audience have questions?
Wait, so I hear the full conversation because I can relate.
It would work too, don't worry about it.
So the plan that's up there right now is basically the drainage plan?
So where, I do have a question. Where exactly will the home be, the new home? I'm not clear on that, on that map. A little trouble with my vision.
Yeah, do you want me to go up there and show them?
Sure, that would be helpful.
Whoops.
Oops.
Now we're upside down.
Flip it again.
Roy's trying to trick me. That's good, Roy. The existing house right now is right here. We have a driveway going down through here to get to this house. We're proposing a new house right here.
Mm-hmm.
The septic system will be right here. There's the test pits for the septic system. Pat had mentioned we had done soil testing. Pat had also mentioned that we're doing a bioretention, like a rain garden, to catch some of this water. The new driveway will be right here and go up into the new house. We've done calculations to take the runoff from the new house, the runoff from the driveway, and capture some of it here. Right now, there is no drainage, stormwater management on this existing pavement. We're widening the pavement, and we're sloping it from, this will be the high side all the way down, sloping it this way, going through a stone diaphragm. That's this really dark line. That's like a bunch of crushed stones, fell and go. Then it's going to go into a grass swale and run this way. There's like a beehive cover on this one and then this one, that you have, you see a lot of times on the cross-country drainage. Then it's going to go into here, into a drain manhole, a new drain manhole, and go into the existing drainage system for River Road.
Ah, that helps.
Anything else on the Board? Again, anyone in the audience have any questions here?
Roy.
Yes.
So the drainway, then, is going to get down to the river, is what's going to happen, right?
It'll make its way to the river. If it, whatever it is doesn't infiltrate into that underdrain and into the swell. The swell takes some of the infiltration, but not all of it, no.
Isn't there a drainage system for Meadowbrook Drive going down through there?
That, yeah, that's the road to the west that goes off to the south. I'm not so sure there has to be, and it must go to the south.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure because Meadowbrook Drive is up here.
Yeah.
I think there's some drainage at the end.
Yeah, Meadowbrook's Drive drainage goes south.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Which is beyond where this is going to be. Have we seen, we haven't seen the report from Environmental Partners yet, right?
I haven't.
When's our next meeting? Our next meeting is actually scheduled, neither special town meeting, right?
Correct.
Or continuation of annual town meeting.
Right.
The second regular meeting in June is a holiday, if I understand it correctly?
That's right. So we looked at the schedule, and this room is available June 5th at 6 o'clock.
Can everyone that's here tonight make a, June 5th, right?
Same day, just an hour early.
6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m.
We can do that?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to continue this public hearing until 6:05 p.m. on Monday evening, June 5th, which is going to be our next meeting. At that point in time, I'll make sure we have the engineering report from Environmental Partners on the plans. Okay. Can we have a motion to officially schedule that?
Make a motion that we continue this public hearing to June 5th at 6:05 p.m.
So that's a motion. Bates, do you have a second to that?
I second that.
That's a second. Tedesco, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we'll show that as a unanimous vote of all four regular members present and voting. Just for the record, so everyone knows, Lindy Snow, who is an associate member, is free to discuss, ask questions, and answer questions on subdivisions, but he's not allowed to record a vote on a subdivision plan since associate members are only allowed to record votes under statutory actions by the Planning Board for special permits. I think we're all set for now. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If anyone here wants to look at the plans in more detail, I have a large set on the table here. We're going to be adjourning relatively shortly. You're more than free. I'll stay here later if you want to look at it. I'd be happy to explain to you. So we have a little bit of statutory things we need to do. We'll adjourn the meeting, and I'm going to stay here later so we can go over this with anybody that wants to come up and look at these.
I'd like to have a question that doesn't pertain to this particular problem this meeting is going to night.
Certainly.
Okay, I live on Route 18, okay? I would like to have some information to what's going on down there. I have people coming in my yard saying, "This is not my property." From what I understand, when they put the highway in, what's ever going on down there, it's going to come almost up to my front door from the center of the highway, okay? People are coming to take in my, saying my backyard belongs to them. I have been up, as you know, to the town hall many times, and not in an acceptable manner. I will take that. I'd like to know what's going on down there. And, you know, what can I expect?
Where?
Route 18, North Bedford Street, 597.
Where on Route 18?
That's down by where you live, I think.
Yes, I'm not sure what you're...
Okay, do you know where the liquor store is down there?
Yes.
The garage, it's all in that area, right before there, down by the coffee shop, right across some, what is it, Har Dings Company?
There's nothing that the town is doing. The state has been looking at...
But I'd like some information.
We don't have that.
You have access to it.
We don't have that information.
You didn't appoint somebody?
The state has not submitted anything to us yet as to what their future plan is.
Well, did you not appoint somebody in charge of the highway here the other, last week or something? Somebody from this town is supposed to be overseeing Route 18 and what's going to transpire.
That's it.
As a citizen of this town for 25 years, I'd like some information straight.
Let me try and answer the question here, please.
Yes, straight.
First of all, the state is in preliminary engineering study on the section of Route 18, starting in the Whitman Town Line and going all the way to the traffic light in the center. They have engineering crews out, taking meets and bounds of all of that area, and that's going to take somewhere between eight months and 16 months. We do not know, and they do not know, what they're going to end up doing on that. There has been no information yet as to whether or not they're going to consider trying to widen Route 18 or to try and relay out Route 18 slightly to get more lanes, especially from the package store down to the center of town. That's one of the options they were looking at, but that's constrained by the bridge at Forge Pond, which the state has said they are not going to change. So there is no information available, other than the fact that they're on an eight-to-18 month project, as I understand it at this time, to get the engineering information they need on both the drainage and where all of the lot lines actually are.
Well, this seems to be the problem, because since last year, about a year ago this time, last year, I've had people in my yard at 4:30 and 5:00 in the morning. I know who they are. I'm not going to identify them here, but I know who they are, measuring property. I've had people at 1:00 in the morning running through my backyard. And the last week, there were people, they weren't kids. These were guys, older fellows, coming through my yard, 1:00 in the morning. I'm not crazy, I know what's going, don't mind. You know exactly what's going on, and I don't buy the smile, this, we don't got...
The state never sends people on site...
I'm not saying the state, I'm asking you if you have any information about this.
I think I answered that question.
Well...
The state is in the process of engineering from the Whitman Town Line to the traffic light in the center. They will not do work on the street before sunrise and after sunset. So it's not state people.
I'm not talking about the potential road being dug up, and I don't know what's going on, white people are in my yard.
I can't answer that, because it's nothing to do with the Planning Board.
I recognize some of the individuals that were running through my yard.
It's nothing to do with the Planning Board.
Well, who does it have to do with at the town hall, do you know?
It can't have anything, the state owns Route 18.
I know the state belongs on that highway.
The Town of East Bridgewater has no legal rights to do anything with Route 18.
So you have no knowledge of what's going on down there?
No.
Okay, or who owns any? I have people have to come in and want to take over my backyard, and a guy over there cutting my yard for a year telling us to get out.
I don't know who he is. You need to call the police department. You need to call the police department about that.
I was to the police station.
I'm sorry, but there's nothing the Planning Board can do about that.
Okay, okay. All right, I made my voice here. I've told, you know, and I've been very public. I don't be on doors to say what I say. What I have to say, I say up front, very...
You need to talk to the...
And that's how I act.
If you've got a property problem, you need to talk to the Board of Selectment and the Police Department, not the Planning Board.
And I do that whenever they make me, I'll look when the meeting is, and I'll be there.
Okay.
You have nothing to do with any, you have no knowledge of what's going on, right?
I know there's nothing going on.
Okay, nothing in the future.
Other than that the state has been doing engineering work, and they're trying to figure out how they can widen the road, and it doesn't look like they can, from what I've heard preliminary.
They have to take people's homes.
No. Some frontage...
Very little frontage on that route, so if you take the front yard, you're going to be sitting on the highway.
Well, Route 18 is already 50 feet wide, so a lot of those front yards are actually in the state layout already.
What did you say? Explain it till I understand what you're saying.
Route 18 from the center line either side is 25 feet.
From the center line to the front yard, yeah, what about that?
Not the front yard, the property line. The property line is inside the front yard and most of those houses on Route 18.
Well, that wouldn't have made sense allowing them to be built that way, would it? Is that the common...
They were built, those houses on Route 18 were all built long before the zoning was done, and long before Route 18 was formally laid out by the state.
Well, I've been here 25 years, I don't know the history before, but there seems to be some kind of history with all this property down there, and I don't know what, but I don't want to be...
I have no knowledge of any of that, other than I know that Route 18, up until around the package store, is 50 feet wide, I believe. After the package store, I believe it's 60 feet wide.
I moved here 25 years ago.
I'm trying to answer your question. That's the best I can do. I'm not sure what the question is.
Question is, I wanted some information as to what's going on. People are coming in, trying to take over my whole yard. I wake up at 2:00 in the morning, there's people in my backyard, this has been going on for a year.
I can't do anything about that.
And they're well-known in this town.
This is the wrong room for that.
Okay.
This is the wrong room for that. All right, next item, we've got a request for setting a bond for... For what's referred to as Tower Heights Phase 5. So we've got Pat Carrera from... So we've got Pat Carrera from PMP Associates here, we've also got Michael Lopez, who's the, the principal on the applicant's side for Tower Heights Phase 5. So we do have, we do have in our hands an estimate, a road bond estimate, which was prepared using our standard spreadsheet. Uh, it was actually prepared by PMP, but I did review it, it does match the standard spreadsheet numbers. The road bond amount for the entire road bond, where there are at least the entire five lots in the subdivision, would, would be $250,000. Now, Patrick, Michael, and myself had a discussion that what they would prefer to do to start with is get us to release a single lot, and prior to the release of that single lot, they'd be willing to, and correct me if, if any of this isn't correct for what we agreed to, they would place a bond in the treasurer's office of $50,000. At that point, we'd release one lot. When that lot is sold, whether that be sold as a, as a lot or sold with a house built on it by, by Mr. Lopez, another $100,000 would be deposited into the bond account. At that point, we'd release a second lot. When that second lot and/or house are sold, a, a second deposit of $100,000 would have been made, bringing the total to $250,000, with the caveat that if at the time those two actions happened, the bond amount has been reduced by further work in the subdivision, i.e. drainage, sidewalks, landscaping, whatever that may be, would use the modified bond amount that matches up with the current estimate at that time. So my comment to, to, to both Patrick and Michael was that, uh, since I've been on the planning board dealing with Tower Heights, we have never had any issues from day one, and, and we're now gotta be approaching 30 years, I think, since it first started. So I don't see that there's any risk to the planning board, so, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to consider releasing, we'll have, we'd need to know which lot it's gonna be, but, do you know that?
Yep.
Yeah, Lot 4.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to release Lot 4 of the Tower Heights Phase 5 subdivision upon receipt of $50,000 cash bond to be placed with the treasurer and/or collector's office. I'm pretty sure it actually goes to the treasurer's office, right? Yes. And that we hold the remaining four lots, and that the, the conditions for releasing the second lot and the third lot were, prior to each release of those lots, we'd receive another $100,000 in the account, or whatever balance was set, set on the then-current bond estimate. Is that, is that what we've agreed to? I believe it is, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But also, I have another lot that I have a customer on. So I was wondering if we could do $100,000 for two lots. That's $50,000 a lot, and then after I sell these two houses, I'll come back and I'll renegotiate and I'll give you the balance of whatever I owe you.
So, so why don't we say this, that, that if you put in $100,000 and you'll release two lots, as soon as one of those is actually sold, we'll put another $100,000 in?
Well, yeah, or the balance of whatever I owe you.
Whichever one is sold first, when, when you sell, actually convey one of those, you'll put another $100,000 in.
So, what I, what I'd like to do is give you $100,000 now...
Okay.
And you release Lots 4 and 3.
Okay.
I have a customer for Lot 3, and I wanna be able to build them two houses this summer, finish up, like do a bunch of work, and then I'll say, "Okay, here I am, let's renegotiate what I owe you, and I'll pay you off the balance of whatever I owe."
Alright, but I, but I, I think what we wanna do is, when, when one of those two houses is actually sold to a third party...
Mm-hmm.
We want another $100,000 put into the account, 'cause that's, we wanna get the balance to where we agreed to get it to when, when the, the house is sold.
That's fine.
Alright?
Yes.
Alright, so again, that's, that's now three, is it 3 and 4 now we're talking? Okay.
3 and 4.
Alright, so I'll, I'll work with the office to make sure we get the exact language of this correct, but, so we'll, we'll start off with $100,000 deposit with the treasurer's office, with the release of Lots 3 and 4, with all of the legalese that, that's in the covenant release, which is a whole page of stuff. And that when one of those, whichever one of those lots is sold first, another $100,000 is deposited with the treasurer's office. When the second lot is sold, at that point, we'll reconcile whatever the balance is in the, in, in the bond estimate, and if more money needs to be added, we'll get that added so that it matches with the bond estimate before we release the last three lots. Okay?
Yep.
So can we just have a motion to, to do that as stated, and, and I'll draft that and send it to everybody so they can look at it and agree that, that, that we've, we've got there?
Make a motion to, um, to, as stated, um...
Agree to the partial lot release for Tower, Tower Heights Phase 5.
Thank you.
Okay. That's our motion, Phillips, do we have a second?
I second that.
So we have a motion, Phillips, second Tedesco, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we'll show that as a unanimous vote of all four regular members present and voting.
Fantastic.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to call you.
Good, how are you?
Alright, are we back, are we back up at this point, or are we still off?
Well, Zach tells me the signal is going out live, but it doesn't seem to be reaching the deck. I'm, I'm not quite sure what Ryan did, but he knocked us off the air for a couple minutes.
So, so people can see what we're, we're...
We're televising live, but it's not reaching the record deck here.
Okay.
Well, just a question on that...
Certainly.
On the bond there, is, does the road have to be based first?
It is based.
It is based?
It is based.
Oh, okay, great.
We wouldn't issue a bond if the road wasn't basically...
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So just for, 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 for both Rachel and Diane's benefit...
Yep.
Past practice, because of requests we've received from the, both the fire department and the, and the police department, we no longer even consider releasing lots regardless of the bond amount set, unless the base coat of pavement or the binder coat of pavement is down. Because otherwise, the, the possibility that the fire department or police department, depending on weather conditions or whatever, may not be safely able to get to where a house is if, if it's only gravel down, even if it's compacted gravel. So we no longer allow lot releases to go out until such time as the base coat of pavement is down.
Okay.
And the principal part of the drainage is in.
Makes sense.
Yeah?
So if, if you were to go up and look at, which you're free to do, by the way, as a member of the planning board, uh, go up and look at Tower Heights Phase 5.
I'm not familiar with Tower Heights, so I would like to go and see what it looks like.
It's a very big subdivision. It started, Tower Heights overall started some 20, 30 years ago.
Where is that exactly?
It's off of Highland Street.
Okay.
If you go down Route 18, take a left on Highland Street, you take a right after the water tower, and I'm trying to think of what the, the street going in at the water tower is.
Tardy Terrace, is it?
Tardy Terrace is where you would turn in.
Okay.
Oh.
When you get to the cul-de-sac at Tardy Terrace, you go left...
Yep.
And that's, the subdivision actually starts there.
Beautiful set.
It's a very big subdivision. There's, there's multiple roadways and, it goes all the way out to Winter Street, actually, now.
Right, right.
So you can go all the way through to Winter Street.
Okay, good. I, I should take a tour, yeah.
I, I wanna hold off reorganizing, because I, I don't wanna reorganize until Kevin Riley's present. I have in mind some changes that I'd like to make, but I don't wanna do that without Kevin present.
Sure.
Uh, and obviously, before we, when we vote to make those changes, everyone here has one vote. Lindy included. So, so another thing I'd like to bring up, and I think you're probably aware of this, Lindy, but we are now short one member on, on the regular members of the planning board. I understand to some extent why you wanted to become an alternate, but I would like to say if you're willing, I mean, just think about it, you don't have to answer anything tonight. Uh, we do have an opening, if you're interested in potentially coming on back as a regular member. All that you would need to do is submit a letter jointly to the planning board and to the selectmen's office...
Yep.
That you're interested, so, think, think about that and...
I think Bill Nolan did that, didn't he, years ago?
Yes. So just, just think about that and, you know. Uh, there are a couple of other things we were, we were gonna discuss tonight, but one of them's already been done, and, and that is that the June 5th meeting is gonna go off at 6 o'clock. And again, statutory issues here with Massachusetts general laws. Town boards are not allowed to hold a statutory public meeting when town meeting is, is open. So town meeting is scheduled to open at 7:00 PM, so we have to be done by 7:00 PM. Now, the thought process behind that is that we shouldn't be here, we should be at town meeting, if, if there's, if there's a town meeting open, but...
Trot over there.
Yeah, obviously, who attends town meeting, that's a personal decision, but between, you know. I would like to see everyone on the board at town meeting, I mean, important things happen at town meeting. I have some things on, on my tablet, and by the way, you both should get tablets. I'm not sure that we have them available in the office at this point, but...
We have one waiting for an allowance return.
Okay. So, and I would be happy to show you how to use those tablets to access our stuff. It is on a, a site called Microsoft Teams, I believe. Is that correct? We've been trying to load everything on a site called Microsoft Teams. Now, you should be able to actually ac, access Microsoft Teams through your home computers as well. It's a, I can actually access it on my, my cellphone, but that's not real informative, trying to look at it on there. I will help you, either one of you or both of you.
Come at the same time?
Right.
In fact, what I, what I'd like to do is, is if we can get a joint time together, I'm more than willing to come up and spend some time going over some of the processes we go through.
That'd be great.
And, uh, make sure everybody understands what we do.
Sure.
A lot of people think we have far more power than we actually have, but we do have to follow the statutes, and, I mean, one of the clear statutory things we have to be careful with is Title 5, which is septic systems and perccability of soils, belongs to the Board of Health. We need to know that our drainage will work if we have in-ground drainage.
Yes.
We rely on Environmental Partners as our consultant that we use. Wetlands issues, if they're true wetlands issues under, under the Wetlands Protection Act, belong to Conservation. We do work jointly with Conservation to try and make sure that we don't have strong different opinions as to how drainage should work in a subdivision. We try and work together to make sure both parties get satisfied equally, but inside the actual wetlands lines, those are owned exclusively by the Conservation Commission under state law. Okay?
Can you say that again? Inside the wetlands?
Inside the wetlands lines, as they're done and mapped, once, once the Conservation Commission agrees where those lines are...
Yeah.
And where the bordering, the bordering lines go in terms of 25-foot setbacks and 50-foot setbacks, those all belong to Conservation.
Okay, so up to 50-foot setbacks is Conservation?
Generally speaking, yes. And they have right to put restrictions on what you can do in those setbacks.
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering what, what those lines meant, those colored lines and...
That's what those lines mean.
Okay.
Okay? And we can discuss a lot more of that stuff as we move along here.
That's helpful, yeah.
So, so given that there's, from us, the things we need to do, there's, there's really nothing else to do tonight?
Well, for the law, at least, I did have the signature page separately in case any of the items describing the lot, having a page in there, and then the other two are listed on one. So if you wanted the present board members to sign the page while they're here, unless you wanted to just put the whole thing on to the next meeting?
I, I think, based on the vote, we could actually sign it outside the meeting, we don't need to be present to sign it. So I think I would prefer to be able to get the rewording done, make sure every member has a chance to read it and understand it, before we ask them to put their signature on the page. 'Cause it does have to be reworded quite a bit because of the discussion we just had. Most of the boilerplate part of that is actually fine.
Yes.
We just need to change the first part.
At the time, it was one lot, now it's two. Plus, I'm not sure, we didn't know who would reorganize and what titles, so Rachel and Diane, I just put their name, we've not been decided.
That's fine.
But I thought we could handwrite that in if we have to. So we'll just add that to the next meeting then, right?
And, and, yes, please.
We'll do it in the office, and then if it's not done, it's the next agenda.
So again, just quickly tonight while, while we're here, the covenant is actually a legally binding document that says, "The subdivider, the person who owns the land and has legal control over the land, is not allowed to sell lots within that subdivision based on the covenant which is recorded at the registry deeds, until such time as the planning board votes to release one or more of those lots." We give them a document that's actually called a lot release, and before he can pull a building permit on that lot, he has to show that that document has been recorded at the registry releasing that lot. Now, the, the main purpose of that is that any third party who's trying to sort out what's available to be bought and/or sold, they're gonna see the covenant, they're gonna, first of all, they're gonna see the subdivision approval. That subdivision approval references a covenant, that covenant is supposed to be recorded at the same time as the subdivision plan. Anyone who's looking at real estate should know that when there's a subdivision that's under covenant to the planning board, they can't sell individual lots out of that subdivision until such time as there's also a covenant release recorded at the registry with an actual lot number on it. So that's the process we were talking about, just a little bit earlier. So it's a fairly, it's a fairly, I consider it straightforward, but it's really not quite as straightforward, I didn't think it was that straightforward when I first started with the planning board, so... Okay?
Okay.
So, and we are gonna talk at, at one of our next couple of meetings, the MBTA Community Zoning Project.
Yeah.
Right now, Old Colony Planning Council is doing some, some foundational work to give us some fairly accurate maps of the two sections of town we're actually looking at potentially to fit into that. I, I think we're required, under state law, to do this. It's not an option. It's not a nice-to-be-have, it's, it's under state law, we have to do this. There are two areas, general areas I'll describe right now, one of them is the, the area on the northerly end of Route 18, towards the Whitman Line, beyond where the F1 racetrack used to be, where that, that new 400,000 square foot warehouse is currently being built. It's north of that, all the way to the Whitman Line. That's the area that we have the interminister agreement with the city of Brockton to provide municipal sewerage in. The plan is also that that municipal sewerage will eventually come all the way down to Compass Medical, just short of Grove Street, and cover all of what, what we used to always refer to as the Foxborough Company property. It's now, it's now fully owned by Equity Industrial Partners, and the Compass Medical Building is on that property. Equity, Equity Industrial Partners has, has multiple interested parties to build other health-related and industrial-related buildings, as well as expanding what can be done in the existing Foxborough, old Foxborough Building, of which Hot Hanks is currently located in. They're highly constrained right now because of septic issues. So we're sincerely hoping that as, as that, as that system moves down closer to them, we, we could have more industrial growth in that area. 'Cause the primary constraint at that site right now is, is...
Is septic.
Is wastewater, septic.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm hoping by our next meeting, we'll have some preliminary mapping from, the other location that's been identified is down, is the downtown area, and the area that, that runs around the area of Spring Street down to roughly the, what I would call the, around the area of Spring Street down to roughly what I would call the last business buildings and carriage crossing, all the way back to Spring Street, and it would include the former steel property where they used to do steelworks and...
It's across from the post office?
Precise engineering across the street from the post office. Yes.
So that's buildable in there?
With municipal wastewater, yes. Without it, no.
Okay, yeah.
Or very marginally buildable without it.
Right, yeah.
The Title 5 rules basically say you can build almost anywhere now because you're allowed to raise the septic system until you can get it above the water table, with the exception that you still have to be able to show that you can get water down through the ground. Now, I know, and a lot of people in town know, that a good portion of the downtown area has heavy clay deposits, relatively close to the surface.
I know a business owner there who's told that to me.
I mean, that's why Stiles and Hart used to have their main clay pits in the back there.
Yeah.
You can still see those. If you were to walk through that area, you can still see the hundreds of thousands of reject brick that they fill the holes back in with.
Oh, really?
But in any case, we should have more information available when we hear back from Old Colony Planning Council. So is there anything else we need to do tonight? Okay, so at this point in time, I think I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn our meeting.
So that's a motion. Tedesco, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Phillips, that we adjourn. Our call at time is 8:12 PM. Again, I apologize for being late tonight. Some unexpected circumstances cropped up, and I couldn't get out of my commitment with the grandchildren until a little bit later than I thought, so... Okay, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.